Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting for the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, February 8th, and everyone will stand. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this point, are there any changes or adjustments to our agenda? Any changes or adjustments to the agenda? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to approve our agenda?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners Swalison. Is there a second?
Starley, support.
Thank you so much, Commissioners Hawkins. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we now have our public comment period, and this is an opportunity for our citizens to appear before the Board regarding any matters of county concern. Any members of the public who'd like to speak this morning? Administrator Yorki, have you received any comments to read?
Madam Chair, I have not.
All right, thank you. So we'll close our public comment period and move on to our consent agenda item. Is there anything someone would like to pull from the agenda? Anything someone would like to pull?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there a second?
I will support you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners Swalison. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. All right, moving down, we, boy, are moving quickly through this agenda. And so at this point, we would like to go to Land Services, and we'll have Tim Nelson come forward.
You should take a break first. Yes, it's been a long morning already. Let's take a break. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good morning, everyone. This is actually an item that had been to you before in a sense in the fact that I've already come to you with a request for support for the Snowmobile Club's grant application last year, and it had passed through the Parks and Trails Commission and had passed through the Board of Commissioners to get support for that application. That application, they did not get that part of the grant. They've now modified the grant and are resubmitting an application. Afforded that application to you, and we do have Randall Knutson of the Snowmobile Club to directly answer any of your specific questions. This did, we did run this through the Parks and Trails Commission for a vote on this, and it was unanimous for support. Going forward to you to recommend support for the trail. It will cost the county nothing. There's no matching funds that the county has to supply.
Randy, is there anything you would like to share with the Board?
I would appreciate your support. You know, it is just getting some equipment that's long overdue. We spend a little bit of time, especially on the drags, repairing repaired things that we've repaired before. So yeah, it's just kind of upgrading our system. We're kind of creating a matrix right now on, you know, sunsetting and trying to get more of a clock on, you know, what's going to be coming up that we're going to need to replace. We'll hopefully be able to create that matrix and create a grant plan as well. We do have quite a bit of equipment to make sure that those trails are groomed. But I appreciate your support. Again, no taxpayer dollars requested. We do have the matching dollars set aside.
Well, thank you so much for that explanation. This Board is one that really appreciates you looking into the future, developing that matrix, and taking the time to come up with a plan. So we do appreciate that. Questions that any other Commissioners may have at this time? Any remarks? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt support for a modified grant request from the Cook County Ridge Riders Snowmobile Club for equipment.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Starley, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, if I could interject. I think it was, I think it was our intention to swear in our new Veterans Service Officer
All right.
this week. However, that did not make it onto the agenda. We do have our new VSO, Karen Christensen, here this morning, and we also have Kim Shepherd from Court Services. But a procedural question, since this did not make it on the agenda, can we add it in, or does it need to be postponed?
I believe we could add it in if we had a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add the swearing-in of Karen Christensen to our agenda, and I'd propose doing that immediately after Item 4.
All right.
Swalison supports.
Thank you so much, Commissioners Swalison. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with that, Kim, maybe you would like to come forward to do the honors.
If you can raise your right hand when we see you. I, Karen Christensen, thought there was something to say that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Veterans Service of the County of Cook, State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. I may just pledge freely and willingly to the Veterans of the County, of whom I will serve. Thank you.
Congratulations, Karen. We welcome you.
So, and I'd just like to say a few words. First of all, Karen, we are really thrilled to have you onboard. And I know that, I know that in interviewing you, you talked about your excitement about this position and the ability to be in this role to serve Cook County veterans. And I was wondering if you'd just want to go to the mic behind you there briefly and just tell us a little bit about yourself and kind of where you're coming from and so on.
Okay, I grew up in St. Paul, and then my parents moved up here in 1987. I have not resided here until three and a half years ago when my whole family moved here so we could be closer to my parents. Before that, I was in the service, in the Navy. I did four years from 1989 to 1993. I served mostly, my time was on, I was part of an air crew, military intelligence. So we did a lot of, I did a lot of missions out of Guam. We went to quite a few different places. Then when I got out, came home, went back to school. And when I was in Virginia, Minnesota, that's where I met my husband. As of this month, we'll be married for 23 years. And I have two daughters, 20 and 18. And one of them is now in school down at Lake Superior College to become a nurse. She has worked up here at our care center. And the other daughter, we are trying to figure out what to do. She's into cooking, so we'll figure that one out. And most of my experience has been working with a lot of younger kids. I did the AmeriCorps reading program, four years of that. So I've just been very passionate about helping people. First, it came with my daughter and her disabilities, and that got me really into it. And then advocating for her, and then I just kind of progressed into other things. And I have been involved with some of the services that we do provide. So I've done some of the stuff myself, so I have working knowledge that way. Otherwise, this is definitely going to be a learning curve, and I am very excited. I was really excited when I got the phone call. So I was just like, wow. So yes, I'm really excited to be here, sorry.
Well, we are very thrilled to have you with us. And my parents were both in the Navy, and I'm really proud to have a Navy vet in this role. That's really exciting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other remarks?
Go Navy.
Go Navy.
Madam Chair, I just want to express my gratitude for you taking the position and being here with your family and serving our community in the capacities that you had before and then into the future now too. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate you again taking this position on, and we look forward to all the good work you're going to do for our veterans here in Cook County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to get back to work if that's okay.
Absolutely, that's where we went.
Have a great day.
Have a good day, thank you.
You too.
All right, we'll move on to item 5, Auditor Treasurer Brady Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I'm requesting today is that the County Board approve by a resolution to apply for the 2022 Help America Vote Act Grant. The purpose of the grant is to make improvements to our security or accessibility of elections. This law, I think, first, we first received funds from this in 2006. We bought our first disability-type election equipment using this grant. And we're now improving that equipment with an equipment grant, a separate grant, which you've already approved. This one was for other types of security issues that would support that equipment. So we went through quite an extensive process to qualify for it. It's a small grant, about $20,000. But we used a lot of Art Smolicki's time in the IT office. He answered most of the questions and attended the sessions with Courtney and I to become aware of the security issues. And the IT office has determined that, through all those questionnaires, that we don't need any upgrades to our software at this time. We're in good shape. It's been good to go through that process. We can use this to support by paying the match on that equipment grant. And we still have time to determine if there are other accessibility issues, say, that might, that we might use some of the money for. But at the least, we'll use it to match that other grant. So I'll wait for any questions, otherwise I'd ask for approval by a resolution.
All right. Any questions for Brady this morning? Just really exciting to know that you worked with Art to hear good news about our security in general. That is something we always appreciate hearing. And so without any further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for this resolution.
Madam Chair, I would motion to approve by resolution the 2022 Help America Vote Act Grant to make improvements to our election security.
Thank you so much, Commissioners Swalison. Is there support? Thank you so much, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you so much, Auditor Powers. All right, with that, we'll move on to Item 6, Administrator Yorki.
All right. And I know this agenda is going very quickly, so I'm going to speak slowly to drag things out a little bit.
We don't have a time limit on the meetings.
Yeah, right, right. I'm going to try to make this go to at least 11 o'clock. So just to introduce this item, I want to back up a little bit to a year ago where we were. We're just coming off one-year contracts with all three of our bargaining units. And the reason that we negotiated one-year contracts a year ago is because there was a lot of uncertainty about where things were going with the economy. We were looking, at the time that we were negotiating these one-year contracts, the state was forecasting a budget deficit of over $2 billion for the current, for the biennium just ended, and additional deficits in the current biennium. And so that was really, that gave us a lot of pause because we really expected at that point that those deficits would impact funding that the county gets from the state. So that was one wild card. We're also in the throes of the pandemic, and this was even before the vaccines became available. We really didn't know how things were going to proceed, and all indications were that the economy was going to take a hit from, you know, people being sick, illnesses, supply chain issues, which of course are persisting to this day. There were a lot of unknowns. And because of that, the county's negotiating team last year wanted to be very conservative in its approach to establishing agreements. And so the plan was to do one-year agreements and to regroup a year later to see if there would be more certainty so that we could proceed with doing the usual three-year contracts. So at the time, we ended up, and there was disagreement between the county and the bargaining units about the terms of the contracts last year. And the big concern was the county's very cautious approach, I think, to assigning cost of living adjustments for 2021. And so that was kind of the dynamics that existed in that negotiation term carried over a little bit into this year's negotiations. I think we'd gotten feedback that folks, at least some of the folks in the unions felt that they had been short-changed last year, and they wanted to see significant increases in cost of living adjustments this year. As you may recall, back in July, when we brought forward the budget proposal for 2022, I had recommended a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. That was based on inflation forecasts at the time. And in midsummer, we were seeing that inflation was forecasted to be about 2.5% for the next, I think it was, three-year period. And so based on that, I recommended a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. And then toward the latter half of the year, we started to see inflation go up. And that, and so for the year, it ended up around, I think it was in the 6% to 7% range, which is, you know, something that we haven't seen for about 40 years. And I think that was really a big focus of conversation and has been a great focus of conversation in these negotiation meetings. And so, but we were, we have been able to come to agreement with the law enforcement bargaining unit. Their labor contract calls for 3% increases in each of the three years of the agreement. And that's something that is above what we have negotiated in the past. However, there were several reasons why we thought it was appropriate to go a little bit higher this time around. Those include the challenges that we're having attracting people to fill vacant positions here at the county. It's also a reflection of our knowledge that inflation has gone up significantly in the last 12 months. We want to make sure that our staff are held harmless as much as possible and that the cost of living adjustments make up for what's happening in the economy. And the other major provision, major new addition to this contract is that we are adding a paid holiday, which is Juneteenth on June 19th. And the reason that we're adding that, we do expect the state is going to adopt that as an official holiday. But we also did a survey. We went to AMC, the Association of Minnesota Counties, to see how many paid holidays other counties offer staff. And out of a, they did a survey several years ago, and they had about, I think, 36 responses. And the majority of counties offer about 11 paid holidays per year. Cook County was at the bottom end of that spectrum. We had 10 paid holidays per year. There were a handful of counties that had 11, 11 and 1/2 or 12, but the majority of counties right now offer about 12 or 11 paid holidays. And so we felt it would be appropriate to add another paid holiday. And so those are the major new provisions. There's also, in the third year of the contract, there's also a $50 increase in the clothing allowance for all three positions in the contract. So those are the major changes in the contract. We feel good about, that is, the negotiating team, which includes Commissioners Swalison and Commissioner Mills. We felt pretty good about where we ended up with LELS, and I think they feel that this contract supports their members adequately. And so I'm happy to bring this forward for your approval today.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank Commissioners Swalison and Commissioner Mills for your work on this effort. I know negotiations are never easy. It's a very long and thoughtful process, and I appreciate all that you have put into it. Would either of you like to make any comments? Administrator Swalison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The thing to note on this, generally, as a county, we negotiate with all three, and then we bring them together as a group. This contract was brought forward and vote, the vote for ratification by LELS was performed well before the end of the year. We're continuing discussions with the other two unions, but have not reached agreement with those unions yet. And the group, the three of us in our negotiating committee just decided that it was wrong to withhold from the LELS folks what we had agreed upon as a, you know, their new contract, and so that's why we're bringing it forward. I understand it's a little different from what we've done in the past, but we just thought it's just, we shouldn't be withholding from the group that moved forward, ratified. And so that's, just to kind of get in front of that question, I guess that's why we did what we're doing today.
All right, well, that's very helpful.
Yep.
Commissioner Mills, anything you'd like to add?
Well, one other, I think, significant factor, going back a little ways with the one-year contract, was we really just didn't know anything. And we are still waiting a decision on the federal PILT payment. And so there's still uncertainty there, but just as James said, I feel like we are in a much better place having weathered most of the storm from state ramifications. Also, please remember that we were in a significant transition with our administrator. And we didn't think back then that it would be fair to sign a three-year contract and hire a new administrator into that three-year contract. And so we just thought this would be a much better place to go. And yeah, I think the, I just want to emphasize the significance that inflation is having on our employees and my appreciation for LELS's understanding of trying to spread that out as an organization because those costs can't just be absorbed right here, right now. It's something we do have to work on. And so I really do appreciate their participation and their suggestions and their thought process. And just lastly, I think, you know, it's good to get up to snuff with the number of holidays, but also Juneteenth is just the right thing to do to have a holiday. And so I'm, you know, really appreciative for the thought and the foresight there, and also just the data-driven research, too, to both work with values as well as with statistics. So all in all, I'm very happy with the process. So thank you, Administrator Yorki, and thank you, Commissioners Swalison, for your work.
Thank you all very much. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I really appreciate what you've been doing. Commissioner Mills and I were dealing with this a year ago. We had no idea, like you say, where we should go, what we should do, how to be fair, all of those things. And, you know, we felt at that time, well, one-year agreement would be the best we could do. And now I'm glad you're working on a three-year proposal. And with the other two coming in hopefully soon, we'll be all set then for, and we can kind of file this away. And hopefully, the employees will understand we try to be as fair as we can with what we have to work with. And that's the main thing. So, thank you, Administrator, and Commissioners Swalson and Mills, too.
Anything else? No, I'd entertain a motion to accept the LELS contract for three years.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the LELS contract for 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Swalison supports.
Thank you, Commissioners Swalison. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a contract.
Thank you.
Very great news, very great news. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
And now for Administrator updates.
Indeed. So a few things on my list this morning. Wanted to update you on our efforts to seek architectural firms to assist in the update of the capital improvement plan. We did send out requests for proposals to 14 firms. That happened a couple of weeks ago. We have heard back from six firms that intend to submit proposals. Those include Ortell Architects out of St. Paul, CRBPS out of Duluth, with whom we've worked before on the upgrades to the Y, and I think one other project, but I'm not remembering offhand what it is. But they did a really great job for us on the improvements to the YMCA.
They also have done work for the city, assessing City Hall.
Okay, okay. And then the third firm that we heard back from is ICS, and I believe, Commissioner Hawkins, that may have been the firm that you spoke to at the AMC Annual Meeting in December. Kraus Anderson out of Minneapolis, which is a big firm. They do a lot of work for local governments. DSGW Architects out of Duluth, and then Architecture Advantage also out of Duluth. And I think they have an office in the cities as well. So I feel really good about where we are with this in terms of having six firms that intend to respond. The deadline for responses is toward the end of the month. Let's see, I think it's the 25th. And where we are right now, I've asked firms that are planning to respond to provide questions so that I can compile a Q&amp;A sheet and send it out to all the responding firms so that everybody has the same information to work with. So that's where that process stands. And again, I think we're in a good position to get some strong responses and be able to move forward with the update of that plan. So are there any questions about that issue?
It's just really exciting news to know that we've gotten a number of organizations to respond back to us. So I'm very, very hopeful.
Yeah. And I should mention, too, when we do get those proposals, I intend to involve the Building Advisory Committee, which is also the Budget Advisory Committee, in looking those over. And then also our Internal Building Committee members.
That's excellent. Just excellent.
So if there are no questions about that, I just wanted to move forward with the brief update on recruitment for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Executive Director position. We did receive, I think I mentioned last time, a dozen applications. And just want to publicly say thank you to all the folks who have responded. We really appreciate the interest in this position. Obviously, this is a major issue in our community, and there are a lot of folks who are really wanting to be part of the solution. And I think that was reflected in the number of applications that we got for this position. The HRA board members, along with Beth Ross, the Executive Director at the EDA, Commissioners Hawkins and Sullivan and myself, all reviewed those applications and scored them. And based on the scoring, we have invited three candidates, the top three candidates, to interview for the position. And those interviews will be on Friday, February 18th. So excited to have that moving forward as well. It's been a lot of work to get us to this point and really happy with all the participation that we've gotten. It's truly been a team effort to get to this point and really grateful for the time that both of you have spent to assist in reviewing those applications and really excited for the opportunity to speak to the candidates on the 18th. Any questions about that?
Just a lot of excitement.
Yeah.
I think our community is really, really thrilled, and will be anxiously awaiting the results of that Friday, the 18th interview.
Indeed, indeed. So those are two of the major things that I've been working on lately. There are always, of course, smaller things swirling around, interesting, unexpected things that come up all the time. But yeah, I'm really, these two issues are among the biggest things that I'm gonna be working on this year. The other, the other one is, of course, the update of our strategic plan. And I should mention, I have been in touch with Roger Reiner, who is going to be assisting us with that. Given where we've been in terms of staffing shortages, we are going to be postponing the update of the strategic plan to sometime in the summer. And that actually works out well with Roger because his availability in the first part of this year is pretty limited. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, the update of the CIP is going to require involvement from our organizational leadership. And I don't want to unduly burden folks with more than they're able to handle. So, that is my update for today.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Any questions? All right. We'll move on at this time with Commissioner updates. And anybody have anything to share? Commissioner Storyly?
Madam Chair, yes. I did attend the Ellers Seminar last week. And I would say it was well-done, both topic-wise with tax abatements and TIF and budgeting and community input as to how they work with city and county and just the overall scene. I would first say that it was well-thought-out because of COVID. We each had to take our own COVID test. And I scrambled around to find someplace I could get the test in and got my little box and my little things and got it all figured out and swabbed. And I was negative. So, I entered the conference conveniently, knowing that I was safe so far. We had that done. We wore masks. I did meet with some of the Ellers consultants. And of course, they indicated to me that I was the only commissioner. Everybody else was either city or worked with other entities of governments, which I thought was interesting. And I guess I would say that I met a lot of young people and was encouraged for their abilities to, in some situations, step into a city council, just not knowing a whole lot of stuff. And they pursued how to figure it out, and they're still there. And it was encouraging from St. Cloud to Hastings, you know, to find out that there are ways to do these types of work, have a family, have an extra job, and still be of service in their communities. So, that was very helpful. I would say that the benefit for that was that tax abatements that we're doing is up to snuff. And I would say that I helped, they helped me figure out what we need to do in the next steps. So, those steps I put together, and I'll talk to Brady about that. I think we're pretty good with all of the tax abatements, facilities of being able to help people in the future. So, that was helpful to kind of get all that into perspective. Yeah. Other than the darn cold weather, it was, I appreciated the fact that I could go and do that.
Well, thank you so much for attending on our behalf. A number of us were at another training last week. In fact, my life has been filled with training, very busy with training the last couple of weeks. I've had some opportunities through the DNR to attend workshops on non-conformities and variances in shoreline areas, which apply to a lot of the groups that I work with. So, I've appreciated that. And then, of course, we had our tribal county training down in Hinckley last week on Thursday, Friday, on Commissioners Swalison, Commissioner Mills, Attorney Hicken, and Administrator Yorki were all there with me. It was just a fantastic experience. And everything from the history of federal Indian policy to talking and utilizing Why Treaties Matter, which was here in our own courthouse, but used in a little bit different way at the training. And we talked about seven generations, boarding school presentation, development of a memorandum of understanding, looking at the Leech Lake and Cass County model. That was very informative. We learned about tribal land and land use and law enforcement, Indian Child Welfare Act. And then, what was really powerful is, at the end, an opportunity to meet with tribal leaders throughout the state. And it was a Q and A. And just a very open, very honest conversation. And I think we all learned a great deal. And while we were there, I want to thank Commissioner Hawkins for supporting me and attending the Soil and Water Meeting. So, we tried to cover all our bases. For other commissioners, who particularly were at the tribal and county training, anything you would like to add? Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to, again, thank Chairman Dishaw for his work and efforts as a commissioner when he was, trying to get this kind of training going. And then, now, as tribal chairman, his leadership there. And just the relationship that we have between Grand Porridge and Cook County Organization, I think, is a good one. And there's always more work we can do. But just hearing some of the anecdotes from other tribal leaders saying things like, "We've never spoken with the county," it shocked me. And it made me really appreciate all the more our relationship and what we do have there. So, I'm very excited to strengthen that relationship and do more, do more work. And I very much would like to bring this training, some format of it. I'm sure we can't get all tribal leaders up here. But for our department heads, I think it would be very valuable for our organization just to get that further perspective and understanding because it really was eye-opening.
I would agree, I would agree. Commissioner Swalison?
Madam Chair, I found that attending that training was very enlightening, very educational, and hit just about every emotional feeling that you could have. I mean, some of it was very solemn, some of it was entertaining. Some of it was, was just, really struck you to the core of the things that have occurred throughout history and the unfair treatments that exist, not only historically, but today, which just drives all of us to better understand and to really focus on ensuring there's equity in all the things that we do for all of our county, you know, services that we provide throughout. I mean, it's just one of those things that we know is the right thing to do. But this training, when you attend it, will really reinforce not only the need, but just really put it inside you so you won't ever forget. And I thought it was an outstanding training opportunity.
Absolutely. Other commissioners? All right, well, we have some meetings to note. We have our community leadership group meeting this Thursday, February 10th, at 5:30 via Zoom. And then, our senior elected officials training coming up at the end of the month, February 25th in the morning, right here in our commissioner's room. Arrowhead Regional Corrections Meeting in Grand Marais, which Commissioner Hawkins arranged for June 17th. And then, we have some memos and correspondence, the EDA Board Packet, and our lodging tax comparison. And lastly, Commissioner Storyly?
I will be lastly, but I'm just bringing this forward because I have a really busy next few days. Tomorrow, I'm gonna be attending the Western Lake Superior Climate Resilience Forum. And that's from 10:00 to 2:30, I think. And then, starting on Friday, I'll be virtually attending NACO Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I don't know about Monday, but yeah, so I'll be on Zoom a lot.
Take breaks.
Yes.
Right. Absolutely. How's she gonna take a break when Tim Nelson doesn't walk into the room now? That's my question. All right. Well, we have recognition of staff, our new hires, Jay Decou with MIS Radio Communications Analyst, and Savannah Capps, PHHS Social Worker and In-Home Support. And we welcome both of them to our organization. And with that, I would say that we might make a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Swalison has made a motion. Is there a second? All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Hawkins. We are adjourned.
Another record, snap.
Is it a record?
It's pretty close. 39 minutes.
Wow.
All right. Good work.